Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the first Town of Lexington Council meeting for 2025, and we've got a large crowd, and that's great. This evening on January the 6th. This meeting is being broadcast live on the town's YouTube channel. I am Hazel Livingston, your mayor, and I would like to introduce my fellow council members. Mayor Protem Ron Williams.
Good evening.
Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
Councilmember Jeanne Michaels.
Good evening.
Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Happy New Year.
Councilmember Gavin Smith.
Good evening.
And Councilmember Will Allen.
Good evening.
Our invocation tonight will be led by Lexington Police Department Chaplain Paul Kerr.
Join with me in prayer. Eternal God, we are here on this beautiful evening, grateful for the life you have given us, grateful for the beauty of the state in which we live, and grateful for our community. We acknowledge that you have given to people varying talents and gifts to perform a variety of tasks, and we recognize also that you have given people with leadership and organizational skills that draw together all of this talent and ability into a coordinated effort for the betterment of our community. For that sense of community and leadership that exists among those gathered here today, we express our gratitude. We now ask your blessing and guidance as the leadership of the Town of Lexington meet this evening to conduct business of our community. Grant them wisdom and discernment in all discussions and decisions. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
And at this time, I'd like to welcome Army veteran and current Chief of Police for all Midlands Tech campuses, Master Sergeant Tim Martin.
Thank you, ma'am. While standing, please place your right hand over your heart, face to the flag, and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And I'm going to ask you all to all remain standing because we're going to have a special thing happen tonight. Former council member Constance Fleming is going to come up and lead us in a special song.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gay proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, Ms. Constance. I just changed up the agenda for you tonight. Now, I would like to call the council meeting to order. Are there any deletions from tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we're going to move into the executive session report and approval of items discussed in executive session. Council meeting executive session prior to this meeting where we discuss the following matters: Discussion of Negotiations. Incident to Propose Contractual Agreements Relating to the General Litigation Services; Discussion Related to the Settlement of Legal Claims Relating to the Planning Commission Dispute; Legal Advice Regarding Agenda Items Particularly New Business Items; One Personnel Update Related to a Prior Personnel Matter. No vote was made, was taken. Do I hear a motion to ratify this report?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Williams makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilman Lyle, second seat. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. I would also like to make a motion to approve an item that was discussed in the executive session. I move to allow the town administrator to sign the settlement agreement related to illegal claims relating to the Planning Commission dispute. Do I make a motion for that? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilman Lyle, second seat. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, raise your right hand if you're in favor, and it is unanimous. Now, moving on for approval of minutes, will be a copy of minutes from special called council meeting minutes September 30, 2024, a regular town council meeting minutes October 7, 2024, regular town council work session meetings October 21, 2024, regular town council meeting minutes November 4, 2024, and regular town council work session minutes November 18, 2024, and regular town council meeting minutes December 2, 2024. So with that, I think you're called up, and you're starting a new year. So do I hear a motion to approve? Motion. Councilman Michaels making some motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mayor Protem Williams, second seat. Is there any discussion and corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. And now, I'm going to give you an update on the vision plan. Our vision plan update for January is mostly about our greenway and trails. As part of the town's continued effort to provide a walkable and connected community, we have started to create a master plan that will identify opportunities to improve and expand greenways and trails across the town. So we need your input. Please go to the town's website or Facebook page to fill out our survey to tell us more about what you want to see in a trail network. The link includes the interactive map of Lexington where you can place pins on specific locations or destinations for us to consider. In addition to this, there will be a public input session held over the coming months. Stay tuned for more information. And that is our vision plan update. Now, we're here from Mayor Protem Williams on our traffic update.
Thank you, ma'am. The new construction for Carnell Coffee located at Columbia Avenue and King Street is planning to make sidewalk repairs this coming Wednesday, January 8. Expect a lane shift to happen somewhere between 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. Dominion Energy is planning to trim the trees along Sunset Boulevard between Scotland Drive and Whiteford Way. Lane closures can be expected in the eastbound lane between 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m. That's this coming Friday, the 10th. A lane closure is expected next week on North Church Street at East Butler Street as the utility department repairs the road from a recent water line break. Please be careful when you're driving through there with the guys working. Finally, our Safe Streets for All Study has begun and is seeking public input. There's a link located on our webpage and our Facebook page. The SS4A program focuses on improving safety for all our roadway users, including motor vehicles, bicyclists, and pedestrians. Please provide your input by completing the survey or posting pins on the interactive map of specific locations of concern. Postcards with this information and the QR code are available right after the meeting or at Town Hall in the Happening's Hub. The next Traffic Committee meeting is scheduled for this coming Wednesday, January 8, at 8:00 a.m., the third floor here at Town Hall in the conference room. We encourage you to follow all the Towns of Lexington's social media outlets for traffic alerts and updates. Please call 803-358-7273 to report any traffic signal issues, unsafe roadway conditions, or a pothole that needs a immediate repair.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Next up is our public hearings. We will now open the public hearing portion of this meeting. We ask that those that want to speak to please come to the podium, provide your name and address for the record. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and a timer will be set by the clerk. There will be no standing head count of opponents or proponents. The purpose of this public hearing is to obtain facts regarding the subject matter on the agenda. Please note this is only for council information and not a question-and-answer session. These guidelines are in place to help public hearing portion run effectively and also allow all those that wish to speak proper time. With that, is there anyone that would like to speak regarding the public hearings for tonight's list? Final reading of annexation of Lexington County Tax Map Number 4004300-03-014, located in the 800 block of Main, East Main Street. We're causing all kinds of commotion up here today. Would anybody like to speak to that public hearing? Hearing none. The second one is a mid-year budget adjustment FY 2025. Would anybody like to speak to that? Hearing none. On that, the public hearing portion of the meeting will now close, and we now have our presentations for tonight. And our first presentation is from Police Chief Terrence Green, celebrating the 100th year of the Lexington Police Department. Wow, wow, wow. And I see somebody out there I recognize, and I miss coming by him.
Hello, I'm Chief Terrence Green, and I'm honored to announce that 2025 is the 100th anniversary of the Lexington Police Department. Hello, I'm Chief Terrence.
You're going to have to sing for us.
And I'm honored. And I barely remember the script they had, and I'm forced to do that, so.
What's your favorite song to sing?
You might want to get my sconces back up.
Hello, I'm Chief Terrence. This is a great video.
How about the wow? Chief, while he's working on this, do you want to go ahead and recognize Employee of the Year?
Do that? Do that? Okay, can we get Kenny and his family's name? Mayor, council, and the resident of Town Lexington, each year we recognize an employee, and we give them a award each year. And the Art Rich Employee of the Year Award was established in honor of Inspector Art Rich, an invaluable employee who showed tenacity, dependability, and trust in Hawk while enduring a terminal illness. Corporal Kenneth Heath has been employed with the Lexington Police Department for 10 years. He's a supervisor of our Criminal Investigation Division and serves as a team lead on our emergency service team. In nomination letters, his fellow officers wrote, "He leads by example by taking on cases and working them himself. He is a wealth of knowledge and constantly shares his knowledge with the division." Another fellow officer wrote, "He takes phone calls on days off, after hours on weekends to assist detectives, to help, to assist detectives with questions, as well as coming in on days off to help detectives gain the experience needed to work more promptly cases." They also say that Corporal Heath is available for all of his coworkers and always come in on his days off to help them out. He also does this all without complaining, which I get a lot of. He plays an imperative role in the most recent barricade situation in our jurisdiction. Not only did he lead his, the emergency service team into the residence during the barricade, but he also made himself the lead investigator on that case. He's married to his wife Christina, and they have a vibrant young rap, uh, son, Titus. So it's our honor, Lexington Police Department, to present the 2024 Art Rich Award Employee of the Year to Corporal Kenny Heath.
Okay, Michael says he thinks we're ready, so we'll try this again. And if anybody knows Michael, he puts a lot into this, so no stressing him out.
Hello, I'm Chief Terrence Green, and I'm honored to announce that 2025 is the 100th anniversary of the Lexington Police Department. From a single officer who walked Main Street and downtown Lexington in the early 1920s to a professional and internationally accredited agency of over 70 officers, we continue to write the history of the Lexington Police Department with a focus on community and everything we do. To celebrate this centennial milestone, our officers will wear a commemorative badge throughout the year. A lot of thought went into this, which our badge design team will explain.
I'm Lieutenant Brent Carter, and I'm a member of the 100th Anniversary Committee. Knowing that our 100th anniversary was coming up, we decided to form a 100th Anniversary Committee so that we could discuss and decide which sort of remembrances or items to be designed that we would want to celebrate this anniversary. My role in that committee was to lead the design team for the 100th Anniversary Commemorative Badge and Challenge Coin. When coming up for the idea of the badge, we looked at all the badges that we had record of. We went to the earliest we could find. The first thing we incorporated was the State Seal of South Carolina in the center of the badge, which is on many of our badges. The next thing we did was look at the first badge that we're aware of that Town of Lexington police officers wore. The outline of that badge is inlaid within our 100th Anniversary Badge, which maintains the same shape as our current badge. This is to help us to remember our core values and to unite our modern badge with our original so that we convey the idea that while we have made progress, we have not forgot our core value of serving and protecting the citizens of Lexington. The last design piece we incorporated from older badges was a star in a circle that comes from the very first hat badge worn by police officers in the town. The idea of this is because from time immemorial, travelers use stars to guide their way and to take them to true north. We placed it in the top of this badge so that we could remember that the Town of Lexington Police Department has assisted in guiding the town to our success today, and we will continue to do so in the future. And we hope that as citizens see this badge on their officers during this year and as officers wear it, we'll all be reminded of the sacrifices of those who come before us in service to the town and the work that we plan to do to help push this town even farther forward.
We could give a round of applause. We could, we could ask the mayor to come down to receive the 100-year badge. Each council member has it, but she's the mayor, so we could actually come down. But we also want to ask our man staff and the committee members to come as we present this tour. And just to the audience, each of the council members, they received a 100th anniversary badge, they received a patch, and they also received a challenge coin, a 100-year challenge coin. So they also a part of the team. So if we could get a picture all together. Yeah, come on. I don't know, but you're not going to bite us. Right there, Dan.
One, two, three.
Thank you, Chief.
As we look into the future, we also like to look at our past, and we want to recognize our retired chief, Chief Mike Roth. Chief Roth served from 1988 to 2004, and during his tenure, the police department came modern. We came from the old age into the modern age because when he took over, he started by purchasing brand-new cars instead of fleet cars. He also switched guns from revolvers to automatic weapons. He was one of the first to implement video cameras in vehicles and police cars. He established our first K-9 unit, and he also led us to state accreditation in 2009. So if we could, we'd like to give him a round of applause and present him with the badge, the 100-year badge.
Chief, I'm going to come hug your neck because I served with you. You were here when I first started, my first piece. Squishin', Terrence.
You boss like your daddy.
I am boss.
So in conclusion, we'd like to thank the Lexington Police Department Foundation who provided all the funding for this. This didn't come out the police budget, so nobody can say we spent money, um, abhorrently on different things. This came from our foundation. We also like to thank Michael Tobler for the ID Department, and we also like to give thanks to the police officer, the Lexington Police Department 100-year commemorers. A hundred years, that's a life. You probably won't see it again, well, we won't see it again, but we're going to enjoy it this year. And please, throughout the year, the staff, Michael, will be putting videos out about the police department, so stay tuned to our social media. Thank you all for what you do for the police department.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Our next proclamation is from Councilmember Gavin Smith, Health for Humanity Yogathon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Bear with me, I'm a little sniffling, so if I sound funny, that is why. A proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington recognizing Suryar Namaskar Awareness Period, January 16 to February 2, 2025. Whereas yoga is an ancient process of keeping the human mind and body in good health, spiritual training has been considered a part of physical training since ancient times in India. The Suryar Namaskar is a special sequence of yoga postures that provides the key health benefits of yoga in a very succinct package. And whereas Hindu Win-Winsmana saying is a voluntary nonprofit social and cultural organization that aims at preserving and passing on the ancient Hindu heritage and cultural values to the next generation of Hindus and raising awareness around the world. And whereas HSS is an organizing and help for humanity Yogathon, and the goal is to complete 1 million Suryar Namaskar by 12,000 participants collectively and individually to promote friendship, mutual understanding, and good health among multicultural and diverse members of the community. And whereas yoga enthusiasts, yoga studios, local schools, and organizations are participating in this event, sun salutations can be included daily during this time as a part of physical activity and/or spiritual training. And now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, that Suryar Namaskar Awareness Period is hereby recognized and commended and thanks for it. And thanks HSS for their outstanding job in helping to preserve and promote the ancient heritage and cultural values around the world. Adopted this sixth day of January 2025, signed by Mayor Hazel Livingston. And I do believe we have some individuals from the community.
All right, one, two.
Hey, yes, good to see you. Three doors down, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Good evening, everyone. A very happy year to you all. So yoga is not a new term. It has been there more than thousands of years ago. It's been practicing in day-to-day life. These days, the mental health has been a big concern among the youth and entire population because of a lot of food changes, cultural changes, and as well as technical addiction for the social media or digital addiction as well. As an organization, we would like to conduct these Yogathons every year at this time so that they can learn and percolate down throughout the year. This not only helps to improve focus, health, that's mental and physical, emotional, and psychological health, it also improves the clarity and productivity as well. We teach this for all the generations, all the ages five and above, for free in Lexington, one of the Hindu Monday, every Sunday after the Sunday School. And thank you for this opportunity to honor this one with a proclamation. We also received, would like to let you know, we also received a proclamation from our South Carolina government as well for the same Yogathan. Thank you so much once again.
Thank you. Our next presentation is recognizing Ms. Shayla Bowers, Royalty USA Junior Teen 2025. Mayor Protem Williams.
Thank you, ma'am. Shayla, you want to come on up while I read all of this? We're going to be here a while. Whereas the Town of Lexington is proud to celebrate the achievements of its outstanding citizens who bring honor and recognition to our community, and whereas on Sunday, November 17, 2024, Shayla Bowers made history as the first young lady to win the national title of Royalty USA Junior Teen in the Royalty USA Pageant System. And whereas the Royalty USA National Scholarship Pageant seeks to enhance the lives of girls and young women through a family-oriented environment that fosters lifelong friendships and encourages participants to rise, reach, inspire, serve, and empower while promoting good character, community service, and personal achievement. And whereas Shayla Bowers exemplifies these values through her community service initiative, Shayla Sanctuary, which includes... Shayla Sanctuary, which includes serving as the Four Paws for Ability Junior Teen spokesperson, raising awareness and funds for task-trained service dogs for differently-abled military veterans and children, sewing lap blankets and pillows for military veterans at the Dorn VA Hospital, and providing blankets for Pets, Inc., sending cards of encouragement to cancer patients and military veterans, and feeding and caring for 50 stray cats in her community alongside her older sister Selena and her mother Ebony. And whereas Shayla's dedication to service reflects the spirit of Lexington, showcasing her humble grace and commitment to making a positive difference. And whereas Shayla is the daughter of Dr. Ebony Bowers and the Mr. Jamie Bowers and represents her family, the town of Lexington, Lexington County, her church family, and Lexington School District 1 with distinction as a 7th grade student at Pleasant Hill Middle School. And whereas Shayla aspires to graduate from Lexington High School and pursue higher education at Clemson University or Auburn University with the goal of becoming Dr. Shayla Bowers as a veterinarian dedicated to the well-being of animals. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the town of Lexington, South Carolina, that Shayla Bowers is hereby recognized and commended for her historic achievement as Royalty USA Junior Teen 2025, and for her outstanding contributions to the community and beyond, and expresses continued success in her endeavors, and encourages her to remain a shining example of leadership, compassion, and excellence. Date of this day, January 2025. You know you gotta speak, right?
I do. Line to you. First of all, thank you all so much for what you do for this community. Um, I would like to talk a little bit about my platform, Shayla Sanctuary, and it's where I help raise money for kids and veterans who have served in the military and also adults who have disabilities. And I helped raise more than $20,000 for these families because service dogs, to pay for them, you have to pay more than $40,000 just to get them, and you also have to wait a year. So my goal is to raise at least more than $20,000 and give them to each five families who need service animals, and also making pillows and blankets for these veterans. And it's also been my dream to work with animals, so that's what got me started with my platform, Shayla Sanctuary. So, thank you all, and yeah.
Thank you. Our next proclamation, and I think we have some people here from Lexington High School, Shayla. If y'all will come forward, who's from Lexington High School? I know we have our athletic director here. Is for a proclamation of the mayor and council for the town of Lexington, recognizing Lexington High School for a hundred years of athletics excellence. Whereas January 10th and 11th, 2025, mark a historic milestone for Lexington High School as the Wildcats and their Booster Club celebrate a hundred years of athletics. And whereas since its establishment in 1924, Lexington High School Athletics has played a vital role in the life and culture of the school and the town of Lexington, fostering teamwork, discipline, and excellence both on and off the field. And whereas through decades of change, including new school buildings, playing fields, stadiums, and gyms, the Wildcats had demonstrated unwavering commitment to athletic excellence and community pride. And whereas over the past century, Lexington High School Athletics has achieved remarkable success, earning 58 team state championships, 36 individual state championships, and 237 regional championships across a variety of sports, showcasing the talent, dedication, and sportsmanship of students, athletes, coaches, and staff. And whereas Lexington High School Athletics has not only represented the town of Lexington with distinction on the field, but also upheld high standards of academic achievement and personal growth, preparing generations of students for success in life. And whereas the Wildcats have become a symbol of community pride, an enduring legacy of athletic and educational excellence, and continues to inspire current and future generations. And now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and council of the town of Lexington, South Carolina, that Lexington High School and its athletics program is hereby recognized and commended for a hundred years of outstanding achievements and contributions to our community, and expresses heart for our congratulations to the Wildcats on this centennial celebration and extends best wishes for continued success in the years to come. Go Wildcats! I've said that a lot in my life. Adopted this sixth day of January 2025, signed by myself. And it's an honor for me to give this to y'all, especially since Dustin is the athletics director there, and he was in school with my oldest daughter, and he played football, and she cheered, so it's kind of an honor for me to walk down there and hand this to you, and hopefully my boys, my grandsons, my boys, will be playing for you one day.
One, two.
Thank you all very much, and we have esteemed Wildcat alum on the stage, too, a former football player, wrestler, also wrestled at the Citadel. He also contributed to our senior summit, Senior Leadership Summit for our football team over the summer, so we thank you, Todd, for everything you've done. I don't know what it says, uh, the police started the same year as Wildcat Sports, so I don't really know if there's any correlation there. But certainly, we're really blessed with all the achievements, and it can't be done without wonderful community support and great students, great athletes, great administration, and great talent, and we hope to continue doing a lot of special things on and off the court for years to come. Thank you.
And can you tell us, tell them a little bit about your event coming up that you got this weekend? Is it this weekend?
So Friday night, we play Ermo, and even though, you know, River Bluff is the main rival now, it's kinda cool for a historical standpoint for Ermo basketball to be coming on Friday. So we're recognizing the five state championship teams. We have two female teams and three male teams. And then Saturday, we have moved the event from the amphitheater, if y'all seen the weather report, to the Grove, and we're gonna have kind of a silent auction and adult meal and a little ceremony in Tokyo Joe's plan. So if you are interested in coming, we'd love to have, you know, anybody that wants to be there, and that's, we'll start at 5:30. Over at the Grove, you can find tickets available on the Lexington Athletics website.
Thank you. Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you.
And Todd, I should've made you come down there. I didn't think about that. And our last proclamation, we don't normally have this proclamation, we've got a lot of great things going on in the community. Tonight is proclamation of the mayor and council for the town of Lexington, recognizing Ashley Fowdy, 2025 South Carolina Middle Level Assistant Principal of the Year. Whereas the town of Lexington takes great pride in celebrating the outstanding achievements of its educators who make significant contributions to the success and development of our students and schools. And whereas the South Carolina Association of School Administrators has named Ms. Ashley Fowdy Assistant Principal of Pleasant Hill Middle School in Lexington School District 1 as the 2025 South Carolina Middle Level Assistant Principal of the Year. And whereas Ms. Fowdy's innovative leadership has transformed Pleasant Hill Middle School by implementing collaborative initiatives such as Empower and Cougar Cafe resulted in dramatically improved educational outcomes for students with disabilities. And whereas Ms. Fowdy's dedication to building strong relationships with students and teachers is evident in her daily interaction and has contributed to fostering a positive, inclusive school culture. And whereas Ms. Fowdy's efforts have been laud by educational leaders, including Dr. Quincy Moore, Executive Director of SCASA, who praised her innovative leadership and commitment to school transformation, and Dr. Jared Postalweight, Superintendent of Lexington School District 1, who recognized her as a talented and dedicated instructional leader who empowers teachers and students to excel. And whereas Ms. Fowdy was selected for this honor from an impressive field of candidates by a panel of veteran judges and will represent South Carolina in the National Middle Level Assistant Principal of the Year competition. And whereas Ms. Fowdy's exceptional work reflects the high standards of excellence in education upheld by Lexington School District 1 and serves as an inspiration to educators and students throughout our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the town of Lexington, South Carolina, that Ms. Ashley Fowdy is hereby recognized and commended for her exemplary leadership, dedication to educational excellence, and her selection as the 2025 South Carolina Middle Level Assistant Principal of the Year, and express gratitude and congratulations for her achievements and wish her continued success as she represents South Carolina in the national competition adopted this sixth day of January 2025.
More than anything, thank you for the continued support for Lexington schools. Um, I think maybe I'm more proud of the student here, representing Pleasant Hill Middle School, but also Lexington High School. So it is an honor to be here and to be recognized by you guys and for your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're done with all, now we're gonna go into old business. Our first item of old business is final reading of annexation of Lexington County tax map located at 800 block of Main Street. Councilmember Michaels.
Thank you, Mayor. Clinton Ray Carpenter owns 4.70 acres on East Main and has petitioned to annex the property. A single-family dwelling is being planned on the site. Properties in the town near this one are Zone Protected Residential, Protected Residential 2, High Density Residential, and General Commercial. East Main Street is classified as an arterial road. Planning Commission reviewed the sand annexation during their November meeting and recommended annexing property with protected residential zoning. The Commission recommended classifying East Main Street as an arterial road. I would like to make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Michaels makes a motion. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Smith seconded it. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Our second item of old business is from Mayor Pro Tim Williams, mid-year budget adjustments, FY 2025.
Thank you, Mayor. Several town council priorities for 2024 relate to human capital, including a townwide staffing needs assessment. New strategies were implemented during the year through the adoption of new policies and procedures, while others were adopted in the fiscal 2025 year budget. Additionally, in conjunction with the directors, department directors and staff members across the organization, the town administrator has comprehensively evaluated all positions and departments to align talent and resources with efficient and effective service delivery. Accordingly, additional strategic steps are now needed, including changes to the department's structures and names and organizational chart updates. These changes will directly impact most departments and require shifts in budgeted funds and updates to budgeted positions by department. These updates will position the town to best address continued growth, labor market realities, and changing service expectations of citizens and customers. We have a net savings of $149,000 in enterprise fund, expense of $42,897 in the general fund, so I'll make a motion for first reading of an ordinance to amend the 2025 budget for reorganization.
Mayor Pro Tim Williams makes a motion. Do I hear second?
Second.
Councilmember Carnes seconded it. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. That concludes our old business. Now then, we'll move into a new business. Our first item of new business is Development Impact Fee Update, Phase 1. Councilmember Carnes.
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor. I thought, do we have a presentation?
Yes, we do have a presenter here who can provide some educational information, some background as to what you're reviewing tonight.
Yes, please.
Okay, Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for your time this evening. Councilmember Smith, like you own the weather, so please excuse a little bit of rapsy voice and that as we go, but I have a presentation for you, and I'm available for any questions you have as well. So I do have an agenda to make sure that we get the proper information out for this evening. I'm gonna introduce kind of while we're here, go over some of the requirements of the state law that we need to meet in order to continue a development impact fee program for Lexington, go in-depth on some of the documents that are prepared to meet the state law, talk about your next steps, and then obviously any questions you have, I can stay here as long as you like, so I'm there for that. So by way of introduction, our urgency is, comes from the existing ordinance. It has an effective date of February 1st, 2020, and as part of that, when you go into the ordinance a little further, you see that there's a requirement that triggers a five-year review. That comes out of the state law, and so we're just complying with their requirement of doing a review every five years. It requires you to do it in conformance with the state law on comprehensive plans, and so I bring that to you here. That basically says the planning commission needs to review a portion or all of the comprehensive plan at least every five years. And so again, because the Development Impact Fee Act follows that precedence, that's what we're doing here as well. So your current program right now has three categories. You have Parks and Recreation, Municipal Facilities and Equipment, and Transportation. For today, we're going back to that state requirement about all or elements thereof. We are moving forward on two of the categories right now, Parks and Recreation and Municipal Facilities and Equipment. The transportation category is going to lag a little bit because you're doing an update, a second addition to your transportation plan, your local transportation plan, and that will feed the projects that are recommended for the impact fee. So that's the reason for the delay on there. We feel we're meeting the five-year requirement because we are moving forward the update of a portion thereof, which are two of the three categories. In terms of who pays old impact fees versus new impact fees, the way the ordinance is written is calculate the time of building permit. So those people who have a building permit either in hand or in process at the time before the ordinance has been updated will pay the old fee. The people who come onboard after the effective date of the new ordinance and do not have a building permit yet, when they apply for a building permit, it'd be the new fee that they would end up paying. So in terms of the act itself, and again, whether you're doing this new or doing this as an update, we have to do the same requirements. I get this question a lot, so I just wanna put it out. Impact fees are really to increase capacity of your system to accommodate new growth. So for that reason, everything that goes with capacity is eligible for impact fee funding, whether it's the design or property that's required to do that, whether it's the improvement itself, anything that increases capacity. Once you bring that capacity online, though, now it's a town burden. So maintaining it, operating it, rehabilitating it, those then become requirements of the town for which impact fees cannot be used for. We're really trying to increase capacity with this act. And as part of it, the money gets collected for each category, it goes into its own revenue-bearing account. Those fees are then used and programmed, usually during your budget cycle, to pay for new capacity and improvements that are made. The monies must be spent within three years of the date that is in the capital improvements plan, and there's an annual monetary report, usually as part of your budgeting process for which you would get a report back on what the for which you would get a report back on what the impact fees have been spent on for that year. You see two items here with an asterisk that we're really focusing on for the requirements of the act right now, which is the comprehensive review every five years. And then if you want to add new projects or increase fees, you have to have the study completed in order to justify that. So we're doing both of those with the actions this month. There are four requirements that come with the impact fee study update. First is affectionately what I kind of call the adult book report, and I'll go into that in more detail. That's number one. Number two is a list of capital projects. I've worked with town staff for them to produce that. They're the experts knowing the budgeting and what's going on in your community. Number three is a housing affordability analysis that must be completed in order to give more information for enacting an impact fee. And then the ordinance itself is item number four. In terms of what we're doing and why we're doing so quickly, again, it comes back to the effective date and the five-year requirement from that. So February 1 of 2020 is sort of our launching point, and so February 1 of 2025 is when we like to have at least some portion of the impact fees updated to feel that we meet state requirements. In terms of the documents themselves, I'll just go into them in a little more detail. The first one, again, I call the book report. It's really the justification report for having impact fees. There are three categories that are in there, municipal facilities and services, parks and recreation, and transportation. Again, the transportation will come later under a separate cover. We've already prepared for that to occur so that it can be brought in under the umbrella as we go forward. But really what we're doing is inventorying what you already have, how much capacity it provides for your existing residents or employees, and then projecting forward what you might need in the future. And so as part of that, I want to just key you in on kind of the takeaways. So if you look in the top left-hand corner, that's the 2019 table, and the bottom right corner is the 2024, 25 table. And you can see given the improvements that you've made over the last five years and/or the fact that just to replace them, the value goes up. One of the things we looked at was your property schedule for the insurance that the town carries. And frankly, it's just more expensive to replace things five years from now than it was five years ago, just with inflation and those kind of things. So your cost per resident in order to replace and replicate the system you have now has gone up. It's a little bit of a mixed bag though, because in the green that you see there is the actual persons per household that is reported by the U.S. Census Bureau, American Community Survey, the five-year estimates. And in some cases, those numbers have come down a little bit. So it's a little bit of a mixed bag. Your cost per resident's gone up, but the number of people at the U.S. Census Bureau is estimated to live in some of your homes has come down a little bit. So you have a little bit of a mixed bag in terms of the results. The fees do go up for single-family detached or attached, so townhomes and standalone homes. Mobile homes, they go up, but at the multifamily category, the reduction in persons per household was low, was significant enough that it did actually bring down the fee a little bit for parks and recreation. Now municipal facilities and equipment, that's the second of the three categories we're updating now, all of those fees went up. So before your cost per resident, your cost per employee was about $81, $82, and now it's about $145 and some change. And so the increase of that was significant enough that all the categories went up, even when the persons per household went down for some of the residential. It is important to note also that on the parks and recreation, it's only charged for residential uses. The municipal facilities and equipment is charged for residential and non-residential uses. So just so you have that in mind as well. Now at the end of the chapter, there's something called the discount rate. Communities have the ability through the ordinance that they maintain, so this could be a text amendment if you want to change it later in the future, but they have a discount rate, which would account for either being market competitive or giving you a little bit of leeway if you are challenged in the courts on this. We took guidance from your current ordinance, which actually has a 0% discount rate. So you are charging the maximum allowable fees that we've calculated for you from 2019. So we assumed you would do the same in 2024, but that's a decision you all would make as part of this process. So again, there's a table in there, and that table has different discount rates that you might want to look at. But really, here's the takeaway from it. So again, I'm assuming a 0% discount rate, at least for our conversation. And if you look on the right-hand side in 2019, that's what the fees were then. The fees have gone up for all categories, except you see a multifamily is basically a push within $10 of each other. And this is for the two impact fees I'm talking about, parks and recreation and municipal facilities and services. The second item that is required is the capital improvements plan. And again, town staff has taken the lead on creating this list, and I will ask them to partner with me if you have questions on it. But it is an itemized list of things you would like to spend impact fees on to increase the capacity of your system as new growth comes to your community. The third item we have is an affordable housing analysis, and this is for information only. The state act requires you to produce it, but you don't really, it doesn't tell you what to do with it. But really what we're trying to see is what is the impact to somebody who wants to buy home within Lexington with and without the new impact fees? And so we go through that process. And in the very fine print here is the takeaway from the conclusion of the report, which is when the increase is only a couple of hundred dollars and you put it over a 30-year mortgage, it really becomes negligible and almost zero, depending how many decimal points you go out to. It's really because you already have an impact fee in place, and the one that you are updating is not a significant jump for the two categories that we're looking at. That may change when the transportation comes, I don't know yet because we haven't done the analysis. But for right now, the effective change for either renting, and the renting, we're assuming the owner of the unit gets a 30-year buyback, and for buying, purchasing, we assume a 30-year mortgage, it's about a zero negligible increase. The development impact fee ordinance, we have to update that as well. We're using the same ordinance you have in place now, just being very specific in what we're updating. I just highlighted in green for you to look at now, or we can talk about later, some of the things highlighted, but really it's just to get things up in current. So we have to update different studies that were done. The previous ones were done in August of 2020. Now we have, or 2019, we have to have reports that were done now in 2024. All of the impact fees themselves are actually a math problem within the ordinance, so we have to actually spell out the math problem, even though there's a table for convenience. So in there, we have to update the costs per resident and their cost per employee. So we do that as we go through. And then the last thing that we do is, there was some question, again, because it's almost like a riddle to say it has to be updated every five years in conformance with the comprehensive plan. People just wanted to know. And so we just added a sentence that says it has to be done within five years of the effective date of the new ordinance. So it's just very clear now, you don't have to go to state law to read it and understand it. It's just clear. So what ends up happening is this is the table that's actually in the ordinance. Again, the colored cells are at the top are the discount rate, I assume zero for right now. The parks and recreation and the municipal facilities and equipment have been updated for this new study. Just to be very clear, while the transportation plan is being updated, the old impact fees would still be in place, so it doesn't mean you don't collect those anymore, it just means they stay what they were from the 2020 ordinance until they can be updated. So transportation fees are still being collected, they just have not been updated. So the cumulative effect of parks and recreation, municipal facilities, equipment, and transportation added together is what you would pay as an impact fee still. So in terms of next steps, again, planning commission had made their recommendation December 18th of last year, and now we're forwarding today in order to continue the process. And with that being said, I would be willing to take any questions you have for me. Boy, one sniffle.
Yeah, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So the effective date was back in 2019, and it requires us to update by February 1st of 2025, correct?
The effective date in the ordinance is February 1, 2020.
What happens if we don't do that?
Well, that's a good question, because it sort of depends what your legal interpretation might be of being out of compliance with the state law of the five-year review. And I will answer your question as a planner, as a professional planner. I'm not a lawyer, and I will defer if legal wants to also give a response. In some communities I've worked in, and let's take like zoning ordinances for example, their stance is if they don't have them in effect within the five years that their zoning ordinance, or five or 10 years, that their zoning ordinance might actually be at risk because they're not meeting the state law for updating the comprehensive plan, or in this case, the Impact Fee Act. So it kind of depends what your tolerance for risk is. My understanding and my feeling of it is it would be a really good idea to get it done within the five years, just to be safe and protective. But again, I'll let a lawyer give you a judicial answer on it.
Thank you for your answer.
Anybody else?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Forget the exact terminology, it was like a discount.
Discount rate.
Yeah, and so if I understand that concept, it sounds like you can write into the ordinance some type of discounted variance that presumably would have to be voted on project by project? Is that what I understand that to be?
No, it's not project by project. It could be impact fee category by category though. And so what ends up happening is this report has calculated your maximum allowable impact fee that can be collected. So that's with math and doing the data inventory analysis, that's the most we think you can collect. Many communities we work in, not all, they will do a discount rate on that, either one because that number is too high, and so they try to bring it into like a market competitive situation. A lot of times that happens when there's multiple jurisdictions in the same region all collecting impact fees, they all kind of like to be about the same. Or there might be, just again, just for confidence, if we were to go to court and somebody says, well, you know, you assumed the value of the parks because it came out of your property schedule, we think that's high. We would say, well, the discount rate covers us in that because we collected less than the maximum allowable.
So you guys did the algorithms and the calculations and came up with the maximum allowable?
Correct.
And so it's basically like a little factor of safety per category, not per project, but you could put some kind of discount rate, whatever you wanted presumably, on either parks or municipal facilities or transportation, just at will, kind of to cover, to cover any scenario where it might be challenged, that the math was wrong? Or if you just wanted to discount one category over the other?
Yeah, it's one or the latter for me, is that if for some reason you just decide, and I'm just making this up, but you at Lexington charge a dollar, and let's say Columbia creates an impact fee and they charge 50 cents.
Understood.
You say, okay, we want it either to be competitive or not. That's what you would use it for.
Understood. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So just for a point of clarification and to be transparent, I'm not saying we should do this, but you cannot use the discount rate as a means by which to incentivize certain industries.
That is correct.
You should not do that, correct?
You should not. So whatever rate you choose, it applies to all land use categories within the impact fee category. So for example, I'm going to use municipal facilities and equipment because it's charged for resident and non-resident. If you assume a 10% discount rate, it applies to every land use category in there.
Understood. So it's at those three sections, it's not at the, you know, whether it's housing or retail or whatever.
That's correct.
Understood. Thank you for the clarification.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can you expand on that though? Can you have a different discount rate in each of those three categories?
For each of the impact fee categories, yes, you can. So parks and recreation, municipal facilities and equipment, and transportation could each have its own category, impact fee discount rate. Let's just use numbers to try to keep track of ourselves. So parks and ride could have a 10% rate, municipal facilities and equipment could have a 20% rate, and transportation have a 30% rate.
Could one have a zero?
Well, and that's what you have right now, is a zero.
No, can one have a zero?
Correct, yes.
So you could do 50% on parks and zero on transportation?
That's correct. The problem comes in here, just to expand a little bit on the answers that I gave. If a, if a single-family home comes in and they have a certain burden to the system, and a fast food restaurant comes in and has a different burden to the system, our math has shown proportionally how each one impacts the system. So the discount rate has to apply to everybody equally, because otherwise we lose the proportionality. That is how we defend ourselves in court.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
To expand on what Councilmember Law is asking, and Councilmember Law, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what he's asking is if we wanted to only collect impact fees on that transportation third, could we discount the other two categories at 100%?
That's correct.
So we could only collect impact fees on transportation?
Yeah. And then the other, you didn't ask, but I want to offer this so you know it, is that discount rate is an ordinance provision. So you can, that's a text amendment. You don't have to go through this process to update this study in order to change the discount rate. That is a policy decision of council. So you could do a text amendment anytime you wanted to, to change the discount rate.
And one more question, have you ever seen in your professional experience municipalities or counties or whoever discount two other categories by 100% to only collect one category?
Yes, I worked with a community in the Charlotte metro area that had a transportation impact fee and decided that they didn't want to collect it, so they did 100% discount rate. And even though it was in the ordinance, it was effectively nothing and just sat there.
Understood.
So it does happen. The other thing to think about, again, because I just want to make sure you all have this stuff in your head, is because the parks and recreation impact fee applies only to residential, that's another part of your thinking you may want to do if you're looking for certain numbers, is because the parks and recreation impact fee is not paid by non-residential development. So some communities I work in will charge more or less for that impact fee in order to balance the out-the-door number of all three categories.
So what does, what does retail pay then? It pays for buildings?
The retail, retail land use comes in, they would pay a municipal facilities and equipment impact fee and a transportation impact fee at this time.
Is it safe? I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Is it safe to say that all categories likely pay transportation?
Yes, yeah. They all do right now, and some of them, because it's based on how many trips they generate, some of them are very high. So for example, a fast food restaurant, there's a lot of cars that go through a fast food restaurant, especially that has a drive-through. So those tend to be higher. I'm not trying to confuse you, but I want to give you all the answers. Some places we've worked in, in order to address that disproportionality, they have also done things like looked at their permit fees and things and charged different impact fees to try to, different permit fees to try to balance things out. So it can actually be quite complicated. And knowing what your end goal is, you can find a recipe of ways to get there.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, ma'am. So you're saying that if a fast food restaurant opens, they don't contribute to the parks and the municipal side, they only participate, there's three categories there, they only participate to one or two? In two of them, yeah. They would not pay a parks and recreation impact fee?
So you're saying that the only person that contributes to all of them is residential?
That's correct.
That's not the way it was explained to me.
So all of our small business owners, anybody in any kind of small clothing boutique, a hair salon, any small business is only doing the two, they're not participating in the park side? That's correct.
Yeah, that's different.
Yeah, the parks and recreation, if you, if you really clue into the chapter, you look at the end table, and it's much shorter than the other ones because it's only for the residential. So if that's the case, then businesses are actually paying two-thirds portion where residential's paying 100%. Yeah, they're paying three of three categories versus two of three categories. Yes. That's correct.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I don't know, I don't think this, I mean, it's all based on impact, right? And so it's number of people, number of trips, you have different metrics. But is it possible to give us in broad figures, like on the residential side, maybe we do the residential side first, the percentages that you have in three categories, what percentages represent each of those three categories? I think our current fee for a new residence, we have a impact fee of approximately $2,500 that's paid by the developer presumably. And so do you know, or is it in your chart somewhere, the approximate percentages for each of the three categories? I know transportation's probably the lion's share of that, but what are, round figures, what are those percentages for the three categories?
Sure. I have a table if we could go back to the presentation. And I did, I did not calculate percentages off of this, but these are dollar amounts.
We get close enough.
And so, boy, we're going to test my eyesight too. So if you look at, basically, let's go from left to right. So the third column from the left is the, thank you, is the parks and recreation. left is the, thank you, is the parks and recreation impact fee. Next to that, to the right, is municipal facilities and equipment, and next to that is transportation. And so right now, for example, again, going back, you were correct, about twenty-five-hundred dollars was, was your out-the-door for single-family. About half of that right now would be parks and recreation.
Yeah, so it's fifty percent parks and rec, thirty percent transportation, twenty, twenty-ish percent round figures in municipal facilities. So does that scroll down? Can we scroll down to like a retail? Can we look at that? That's just a slide.
Yeah, it's just static, but we do.
I got you.
We've got a table, and I can answer the question.
Yeah, just for comparison, could you give us the percentages in those? And I guess in retail, it would just be two categories, just be transportation and municipal facilities. I'd be curious about the percentages of those.
Sure, sure, sure. Give me one second to get down here. Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to call it a shopping center, which would just be a general retail?
Yeah.
All right, so again, the impact fee for parks and recreation will be zero, and then the impact fee for municipal facilities and equipment would be three hundred and forty-one dollars per thousand square feet.
Okay.
So you know, again, there's several thousand square feet in a, in a shopping center. And then for transportation, it'd be up to two thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars per thousand square feet.
Okay, so round figures, that's, that sounds like about an eighty-five percent transportation, about fifteen percent on the other.
Eighty-five, fifteen.
Perfect, thanks, sir.
So the majority of it's going to transportation?
For the shopping center, yeah.
For business like that.
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'm, I'm not going to belabor this, but I'm just trying to make sure through a hypothetical, with this slide up, if the town of Lexington chose to do a hundred percent parks and rec discount rate, a hundred percent municipal facilities and equipment discount rate, and a zero percent transportation discount, would it accurately then collect a impact fee for each residential, single-family detached home of eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars, of which all eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars would go towards transportation?
That's perfect, yeah.
And that would be within the statute?
You've got it, yeah.
That's definitely not how it's defined, yes.
Uh-uh.
Thank you.
Good.
Any other questions?
That is not.
I do think that we appreciate you being here tonight, and we may have, Rachel will reach out to you if we have any other questions coming forward, but I do think we are going to table this, and we're going to come back on January the thirteenth at twelve o'clock and have a special council meeting invoked the first time, just so we can comprehend a little bit more of what we have seen tonight and everything.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two is amendments to the landscaping tree ordinance and invoking application of the pending ordinance doctrine. Councilmember Lyle?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On September the sixteenth of 2024, the town council directed the staff to begin researching updates to Town Ordinance Number One Fifty-Six, which relates to landscaping and trees with a focus on addressing the following topics: enhancing the ordinance for commercial and residential areas for buffers, scenic corridors, and amendments to promote alignment with the County of Lexington's landscape and open space ordinance; also to strengthen the protection and mitigation of trophy trees during the design and construction phases of new and expanding developments. Also, these amendments will address certain changes like updating and modernizing the ordinance to align with the procedures already utilized by town ordinances, and also to update the ordinance to align with the South County Local Government Comprehensive Planning Enabling Act of nineteen ninety-four, which we just referenced. Attached herein is the redlined ordinance with recommended amendments, also attached is a map of the recommended scenic corridors to match and mirror what the county has. Upon approval of first reading, the ordinance will receive additional review and potential additional amendments by the planning commission. After review, public hearing, and recommendation by our planning commission, the amended ordinance will return to town council for public hearing and second reading. Madam Mayor, I would ask for a motion to approve first reading of this amendments to the landscaping and tree ordinance, and also invoke the application of the pending ordinance doctrine.
Thank you, Councilmember Lyle. He makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mayor Percham, second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand, and it's unanimous. Our third item is from Councilmember Smith, approval to enter into a ground lease agreement on East Main Street.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The town of Lexington seeks to enter into a ground lease agreement for a period of fifty years with Old Mill LLC. The location of the ground lease is on East Main Street, adjacent to seven-eleven East Main Street, and located directly opposite of one oh two Taylor Drive. There is no fee payment associated with the ground lease. The ground lease allows for the town to construct a municipal parking lot and enclosed dumpster corral. The town will be responsible for operations and maintenance of the parking lot. The ground lease agreement is provided in Exhibit A, and as such, Madam Mayor, I move for authorization for the town administrator to enter into the ground lease agreement.
Councilmember Smith makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilmember Michael, second, is there any discussion?
Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, real, real quickly, was, was there a discussion to try to make this lease align with the, the other leases for the same properties? I thought it'd hurt us to address that.
That was a question asked.
This ground lease mirrors the next ground lease that we'll have for the property off of South Lake Drive.
Okay.
Both are for fifty years.
Is there an intent to make it align with the rest of the property, the trail itself?
We certainly can. I've not been directed to, but I absolutely can reach out to the property owner if you'd like.
I don't want to hold that up, I just, it would make sense to me if they were all consistent.
Have we, have we put this in place so they can keep moving and?
We can, we can enter into it now and, and execute an amendment in the future, but this would allow us to move forward with both.
I think we need to, Mayor, I think we would need to, if we go, I think the parking lot leases should match the leases for the trail.
For the, in terms of the term?
Right.
The agreement, number of years, okay.
Because if we end up with a lease that we can't, don't have the parking available, we still have the trail.
Madam Mayor, I believe it's come to my attention that the trail is an easement and not a lease, so I guess all the leases are equal.
Yeah, they're equal.
Got it.
So any other discussion?
Thanks, to phone a friend.
All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it's unanimous. Our next one is read by Councilmember Allen, approval to enter to agreement for management services and authorized fee expenditure from the Streets and Infrastructure Fund.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The town of Lexington plans to construct a seventy-five space parking lot along East Main Street. The parcel is owned by Old Mill LLC, who authorizes the town to install the parking lot and make other improvements via a ground lease. The town intends to utilize a third-party project manager to oversee the bidding and construction of the parking lot, an agreement for management services with LCK, and their fee is provided in Exhibit A. Madam Mayor, I move for us to authorize for the town administrator to enter into a contract for management services and authorized fund expenditure.
Councilmember Allen makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Smith, second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is, well, unanimous minus wrong. Our last item of old business, I mean, of new business tonight is from Councilmember Michael's, approval to enter into a ground lease agreement on South Lake Drive.
Mayor, the town of Lexington seeks to enter into a ground lease agreement for a period of fifty years with the Old Mill LLC. The location of the ground lease is on South Lake Drive, located directly opposite of five oh three South Lake Drive. There is no fee payment associated with the ground lease. The ground lease allows for the town to construct a municipal parking lot with fifteen parking spaces. The town will be responsible for operations and maintenance of the parking lot, the ground lease agreement is attached. I make a motion to, for the authorization for town administrator to enter into the ground lease agreement.
Councilmember Michael makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. At this time, we'll have comments and questions. Do we have any comments from the council? Hearing none, do we have any comments or questions from the news media? Are there any final comments from the public regarding a specific agenda item? Are there any questions or comments from the staff? I'm thrilled to share that the success of our twenty twenty-four shop Lexton, Lex SC and dine Lex SC campaign, thank you, Gavin, which brought our community together in support of local businesses during the past holiday season. We had two social media contest winners that won a hundred-dollar gift certificates to the store they had shared in their photo. While the official campaign has wrapped up, I want to remind everyone that supporting our local businesses is vital year-round. By choosing to shop and dine locally, you help strengthen our economy and ensure that our business, businesses continue to thrive. Information about the small businesses that participated in this campaign will remain available on the town's webpage throughout the year. We want to thank everyone who participated in this campaign, residents and business owners alike, just keep supporting our local businesses. And I personally want to take the time and thank Kaylee and Lauren and Michael, because they put a lot of work, a lot of time into this, and were very involved and did some great videos, and I appreciate them, I appreciate all the council participating in it, too, and encouraging our small businesses, so thank y'all all, big kudos to all of y'all. And that concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the town council meeting. This meeting was held at the town hall on Monday evening, January sixth, twenty twenty-five. A recording of this meeting will be available for viewing on the town's YouTube channel. Without objection, we are adjourned.